Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this September fifteenth Zion City Council of Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinnon?
Here. Commissioner McDowell today had to go to the emergency room. We received a text from him that he is fine, but he didn't know if he was going to be released from the hospital in time to be here tonight. But he says everything's fine. Mr. Brimmer, would you lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join him in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Pastor Carlson is here from Great Missionary Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in prayer. Great to see you. Been quite a while.
Good to see you, too, Your Honor, and thank you for the opportunity.
You're looking fit and tanned and like you continue to run.
Something else is happening here, too. Second time in my life I've even tried this. I wanted salt and pepper, but I get a lot more salt than pepper. My granddaughter, she says, "Oh, it is grandpa," and she comes and does this.
I just say mine is shoe polish.
Yes. But you've been looking stylish for a long time. I'm just trying. I'm just copying you off, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. Shall we pray? God have mercy. I thank you so much for the privilege of standing and sitting here before you. I thank you for the fact that you are always here. I thank you for your love and your grace and your mercy, these things which we need the most and which are fully and freely and abundantly available from you. I thank you, Father God, for apparently peace breaking out in the Middle East. I would ask, Father God, that peace would break out in America. I pray, Father God, that you'd help us to be able to sit down like adults and talk. Father, I pray in the midst of a season really like no other, Father, that you would help people of goodwill and good faith to be able to address each other and act like the adults in the room. I pray, Father God, that you'd help us to invite Jesus, who is called the Prince of Peace, to the table, and I pray, Father God, that you'd help us to do our part here. Thank you for these men who serve so well and those who have been elected, those who have been appointed, those who are guardians of the public trust. I thank you for the privilege personally that I feel in being a citizen of the city of Zion, and I ask, Father God, your blessing on these folks. I pray that they would be consistent in character. I pray, Father God, you'd keep them safe from attack. I pray, Father God, you'd help them to lead by word and by example. Father God, again, may we, through our comity and our grace to one another, may we be an example to the national audience, and, Father God, may we be able to say that we are doing your work at this time for your honor and glory. I do pray for complete healing for Commissioner McDowell. I thank you, Father God, for his life and his contribution, and again, Father, for each one here and all my fellow citizens, those here and those that we represent. We love you and we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Terrific prayer, Pastor Caraclin. While I typically have a moment of silence, I think you encompassed all the things that I would have hoped to have said, that you said so much better, so thank you. Item number four, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number five, citizens' comments. Thank you, Chief. Mary Lou Hiltabran?
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, during the month of August, as the volunteers put in over 350 hours, saving the city almost $9,000. We performed the monthly siren tests so our area can be warned when storms are coming. We assisted with fires, automobile accidents, storms and flooded streets, food pantries, the Chicago Bears District Six event. We put out barricades for block parties, put in time keeping our vehicles clean and in service, and doing some rehab at the ESDA Center. Our volunteers put out barricades for different events in the city, and we had the privilege of putting out barricades to help block the road when the president came through our town. We performed the admin duties needed to keep our unit working efficiently. Our members stand in rain and wind and sun and during the winter in snow and ice and sleet, doing what is necessary for our city because we care about our city and we want to help our citizens. If you want to be a part of the solution to the situations in our city rather than part of the problems, go to the City of Zion website, choose the "I want to" drop-down menu, and select "Apply for a Job." Our volunteers are not paid, but we are part of the city. Come and join us.
Thank you very much. Denise Lear?
Thank you, Mayor McKinnon and Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Chief Henderson. Recently, on August the 30th, my nephew was killed in Zion. He died, and Chief Henderson has worked very closely with my family, and I can't thank you enough for the support you've given us and feedback and the help that the police have given us. Ms. Irisen, I'd like to thank you for the response from your guys that have worked for the city. And I know a couple months ago I addressed the city about cutting the lights back on in the streets because of the darkness, and I understand we have a large budget deficit in this city. But maybe if we start one street at a time, just one at a time, maybe Galilee. Galilee is a very busy street, and parts of Galilee are very dark. You can't even see your hands on your face. Twenty-seven in Galilee, high drug, high traffic, it's dark in that area, and we need to light it up. And that's about all I have to say. I've been a resident of Zion, as I said, since 1969, and I love Zion. The only other thing that upsets me, as I talked to Gibby about, my nephew died, and so far, all it says is Zion man. There's never been a name attached to my nephew. His name is John Lee Grayson III. He did have a name, and we just wanted, as a family, for everyone to know, he did have a name. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Mitchell?
It's mainly for the Park District, I guess. I noticed, like, a lot of kids like to play in the basketball courts and tennis courts and stuff, and it's kind of all beat up. Some of them are missing rims, and so I just thought I'd kind of run that by you guys.
Okay.
It would be nice to fix. I mean, at least one, and then maybe others next year or something. But to look into that, you know, for, you know, people wanting to get out of the house, have picnics, and enjoy, just enjoy the weather and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's a...
While I usually make these comments and departmental commentary, I will say that I just, I've had lunch the last, probably the last two weeks with the executive director. We've been talking about these issues in our community, Coalition of Healthy Communities meeting that we had. One of the things that we always talk about, what can we do as a city to make sure that our kids are having things to do, especially during this time? Noticed in the paper and just reading that the suicide rate is up between, for young adults ages 19 to 24, because of the severe change in their schedule. So we appreciate the comments, and we are looking into those things and working with the other taxing bodies, talk about how we can collaborate to make more things happen in our city. So thank you very much.
I got one more thing, I'm sorry. I mean, even if people can somehow pay to build one into, you know, to help with these, you know, in any way possible.
I was just going to add that a lot of that property is owned by the Park District.
No, I don't.
I don't know the exact time, but their next meeting is October 15th, their next board meeting.
Okay.
So that's a good place to start, but as the mayor mentioned, we'll raise that as part of our coalition meetings as well.
Yeah, and I got one more thing, so...
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Item number six, consent agenda.
Item eight, approval of minutes of a special meeting held on September 1st, 2020 at 5:30 PM, a regular meeting held on September 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes on September 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye.
Consent agenda, item B, bills, vouchers 135726 through 135874 drawn on Huntington National Bank in A, total $697,921.36.
Is there a motion to accept the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Upstanding.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 7A regarding the disposition of surplus property per Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Yeah, before you, just a request. When we went to Starcom 21 radios, we no longer needed our Motorola radios. We, through the assistance of Italian Chief Eric Troy, located a vendor, Sunny Communications. We negotiated a price of $4,200 for the 16 PR 15 radios, 26 XTS 1500 radios, 47 Motorola press chargers, and 46 Motorola microphones. Their first offer was approximately 50% of what we did end up getting for the advice of DC Troy, got a much more appropriate offer for their resale value, so I feel it's a fair offer. I do need to point out that there is one error in the ordinance under Section 2 that should read "Decisive transfer of personal property identified Exhibit A to Sunny Communications." That's obviously an earlier version of a surplus property, and we'll need to update.
Okay. So is there a motion to pass this ordinance with the update in Section 2? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 7B, to lease certain property located in Zion, the right-of-way south of the building located at 2260 through 2264 Sheridan Road, per Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner. Mr. Andrew Rehul for Inca Inc., LLC, to lease a certain portion of the property, approximately 1,584 square feet of the 23rd Street right-of-way for additional parking spaces.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 7C, to lease certain property, approximately 2,430 square feet, situated on the 18th Street right-of-way adjacent to 1721 North Sheridan Road for the purpose of having paved access to tenant parking, per Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor. Another rule we move for seeing vendors on L.A. P for additional parking again.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 8, 8A is discussion authorization and approval. 8A, consider proposal for asphalt road repairs, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Attached for four proposals, the engineering department has received for asphalt repairs as a result of several water main breaks earlier this year. Staff is requesting that council approve and accept the Lewis Responsible Proposal from J.A. Johnson, A.B. Thomas, in the amount of $22,412.56.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 8B, consider request for water service tack for non-residents, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Attached to request received from two Village of Beach Park residents to connect their properties to the City of Zion Water Distribution System. Additionally, the owners have provided a letter from the Village of Beach Park approving the connections to the City of Zion system. Staff requests and recommends council's approval for the water service connections.
Is there a motion to approve the water service connection, per Director Roberts? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Ians?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now that we're in election season, I'd like to remind everybody, political signs aren't permitted on private property, not on public property, so I ask everybody, please, if there's one that puts your signs out and you're behind the property line.
And when you talk about public property, the, what do you call it, the parkways are...
Public parkways, right-of-ways, alleyways, public, Park District's public property, facilities, poles of public property, basically, it's on their block, and the use is behind the public sidewalk is kind of where the property line starts, that's typically where a sign should go.
Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. First thing I'd like to do is update road projects. IDOT is currently paving 173, as I'm sure a lot of people have noticed, but it's kind of a mess over there, so if you can avoid it, I would avoid it right now. Probably be paving all through next week. The second update is on the projects for the City of Zion's project roads. They are going to start milling all the main primary roads tomorrow. That will probably take us into next week, and then they'll do the two alleys that we have on our list. And then you will see, this is a process called FDR, it's full-depth reclamation. It's kind of neat if you wanted to go out and wash it. What they'll do is you'll see a machine, it looks like a big long train, and you'll see a machine that goes through, it chews up the base, and the asphalt that's left mixes in a 7% solution of cement, and it almost looks like mortar going down the road. That'll harden, they'll wait seven to 14 days, and then they'll put asphalt on top of that. So the whole process, we should be done within two weeks, second week in October.
Okay, and the primary streets that will be involved, that you mentioned?
You haven't listed them.
There's a lot scattered throughout, but it's on the website.
It's on the website? I can bring the list with me.
That's okay. I'll look on the website.
It'll be on the spot.
You know I like to do that, though.
I should have prepared.
That's okay. I can look on the website.
I will prepare. So the primary streets are two blocks on Tarmel, Tarmel Boulevard, between Enoch and Elijah. Emes Avenue, between 29th Street and 31st, two blocks. Elizabeth Avenue, 21st to 22nd. East Bethesda Boulevard, we're doing almost three, three and a half blocks there from 173 to Wilson Court. Enoch Avenue, 21st to 22nd. 22nd Street, Enoch to Eschol. Ezra Avenue, two blocks on there from 173 to 23rd Street. And then the two alleys are the alley that's over by the library, and then the alley west of Gilead between 18th and 19th Street.
All right. Thank you, Director Roberts. Another question. I was just messing with you. Administrator Naval?
I've got two things, one from Chief Lewis and one from HR Director Karen Graves. I asked them to not be here tonight. They didn't have anything on the agenda, so in the interest of social distancing, to not fob the council room. From Karen Graves, we have, she wanted to update council that the part-time administrative secretary position that she's been talking about received a lot of views and submitted applications through our Facebook website. San Alito Bronson actually worked to help boost that promotion, to get the word out there, and we got 47 applications just through Facebook alone on that. So applicants have been contacted, that their information is currently being reviewed, and we're formulating a short, narrowing it down to an eligibility list, and then we'll go forward from there. From Chief Lewis, he wanted to share that September is National Preparedness Month with the theme "Disasters Don't Wait, Make Your Plan Today." You heard Mary Lou talk about the things that ESDA does, they have plans for a lot of different things, but individuals need to make plans for themselves for fire, for earthquakes, for tornadoes, for weather, anything you could think of, it talks, you know, this is the month to kind of put that in action. You can go to ready.gov/September. They have a lot of resources there, lists of different types of disasters, what kits, resources, water, food, things you can do to, and things I'd recommend that you do to be prepared in the event that one of those would happen to you.
There was something mentioned earlier about the election season and signs, and lately we've been getting a lot of calls at the city about early voting, and last time I checked, the county had not sent us the information for the early voting sites in Zion, including City Hall. Do we have an update on that, or when might we get it?
I would have to check with Clerk Spooner unless you're aware, but I don't know that we have that update yet.
We do not. Clerk Spooner is in, has been in contact with the Lake County Clerk's Office.
Yes.
And she will be able to provide more detailed information when she returns.
Okay.
And, excuse me, Mayor, I understand there also supposed to be a site for mail-in ballots to be dropped off here? So I don't know, that's something else maybe.
I think they're doing that in conjunction with the early voting sites. They're each going to have a Dropbox for people who want to do their mail-in ballot and just deliver it directly to basically the clerk's office.
Right. Those Lake County Clerk's Office will provide all that information to Clerk Spooner, and then she'll be able to update the council when she returns.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, I've received several calls about it, and people often talk about, of course, I call the people at City Hall, and everybody is performing their duties, and the people that I've responded to, I've told them we're waiting for the county clerk's office to provide us with that information.
We work at their direction. This is all handled by the county, so they direct us what, where, and when, and we just follow their instructions.
Okay. Chief Henderson?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Miss Opportunity. Real quick, a reminder to the mayor and myself, we'll be sitting in class tomorrow with 25 other people, taking our first of two de-escalation classes. We have 24 officers, HR Director Karen Graves will be there as well, as well as a member of our Community Advisory Committee. The second one will be in October 6th. Other announcement or comment I have involves a serious accident at 24th and Lewis today. I might be preaching to the choir a little bit, but I hope everybody will signed up to Blackboard. We blasted that out through text, email, and phone calls about the road being closed down for about five hours. If you haven't done that, then you can go to the City of Zion Administrator's page for information on how to get connected to Blackboard. Two quick thank-yous, one again to ESDA, this is going to show up in her report for September, but they spent five hours out there while investigators were working that scene, which saved the department countless hours of overtime to have personnel blocking all the roads, so once again, an invaluable resource to us. And the other would be the services of the Major Crash Assistance Team, something that departments do much more in these days and ages. We connect with kind of a mutual aid thing, and they bring a level of expertise in technology that we just could not afford or maintain, including drones that they put up in the air to digitally map out and measure the distances that are, the measurements that are so critical in these accident investigations, and some really highly skilled accident investigators. The young lady involved in the crash could use your prayers, she's in extremely critical condition. The gentleman involved in the crash is in serious condition. But just a big thank you to those two organizations, ESDA and N.C.A.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Henderson. Commissioners, do, any comments from Commissioners? Director Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one other thing I forgot to put out. Lake County FEMA is going to be holding a Zoom conference on the new FEMA app. This is in, tied in with the National Flood Insurance Program that we are part of. I will be on these if there's any questions. Since 2017, FEMA has been re-establishing elevations on the flood areas of Lake County. Residents who are impacted should have already received letters in the mail like this, but other residents, if you're interested in seeing what's going on with this, or if it could impact you, I highly recommend maybe joining us, or there's 10 videos that are posted on the public works site that kind of explain the National Flood Program for this area.
Director Roberts, is one of those areas, the area by the viaduct on 173?
Yes.
Where we've had some issues over the years when we've had a lot of rain? Okay.
Oh, the two dates for, I'm ashamed by all of that Zoom meeting. The two dates, the first date is September 22nd, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The second date is Wednesday, September 23rd, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This information is on the website, the city website also, with the direct connection with the Zoom meetings of the joining of it.
Okay. I do have another question, which you've enlightened me on, and I want our public to be aware, Ms. Lear, who left, who has talked about the lighting situation, and she talked about Galilee, and I've driven down to Galilee, I've had a couple residents email me about it, too, and there's a difference between the lights that are city lights and ComEd lights?
Yes, sir.
And what, if they're ComEd lights, I want you to tell the, our residents that are watching or watch our city council meetings, what's the difference? And with the ComEd lights, if they are out, it is better for the residents in that particular area to call ComEd to get those replaced?
So most of the inner part of the city is ComEd. If it's on, if a light is on a wooden pole, it's a ComEd light. The only lights within the inner part of the city that the city owns are the Beckett Lights and the aluminum lights running down Sheridan Road. Most all subdivisions are owned by the city. There are a few throughout the outer part of the city that the city owns. Those would be on a concrete pole or a aluminum pole. Those are owned by the city. So with the ComEd lights, still call public works to report those out. We will return and call ComEd, but they seem to respond a lot quicker when the resident themselves report those in. We call the same number, there's no special number that we have. I've tried getting one, but they don't have one. The other aspect on that is if it's close to your address and you have access to the internet, go on the ComEd website, and you can actually punch in your address, and it'll GPS locate that street light, and you can fill it in at that point, too.
Okay. That's it. In the Galilee area where Ms. Lear was talking about, 25th is a Salem food store. So I wonder if we should alert them to send that?
We can do that. I wrote that down after she talked about that. We have not turned off any lights. All lights should be on. If they're off, then probably they need to be repaired, so call those lights in. I typically, once a year, send our engineering tech out at night and do a sweep of the city. I'll do that earlier this time. I'll have to go out here in the next week and write all of those down.
That's great, and we're also looking at different ways to approach ComEd with the incredible idea that was brought to me by one of our citizens about being able to get brighter bulbs in some of the areas where we might have higher activities, and maybe you could help with that?
Well, they were, they were, we are still on the list for all the ComEd lights, they're going to be retrofitted to LEDs.
Okay. Okay.
That just has not happened here.
Okay.
I'm expecting that to be done by the end of 2022.
And, and any idea when that might, when that might start?
It was supposed to start yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah. It was supposed to start last year, actually, but they're behind, I don't know how long it is.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I just add, I will take Director Roberts' comments and compose a Facebook post and put it out on our Facebook page tomorrow, to help residents know how they can contact ComEd specifically for light poles in the area.
Great, great. Okay, that's all I had for...
Thank you.
Departmental commentary, number 10, is announcements on October 6th. At 6:00 PM, there's a Zion Township Board Meeting. October 6th, at 7:00 PM, a Zion City Council Meeting. And October 20th, at 7:00 PM, Zion City Council Meeting. And October 31st, an item we're going to discuss before we adjourn tonight, is Zion Trick or Treat, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The hours have been established. We've been talking about that in light of the pandemic. There, there might be some people that aren't comfortable with having trick-or-treaters show up at their house. And Administrator Naval, and we're talking about this today, I know in some, some cities, Racine, some of the other surrounding cities in Illinois, when people don't want to participate in the trick-or-treat, they don't turn their lights on, their porch lights on. If you want to, if you want to participate, turn your porch lights on, and I, I guess from our standpoint, we didn't want to have a mandate where we're telling people what to do on trick-or-treat. They know that pandemic is still in effect, and if I haven't said this as effectively as you said it earlier, I want you to reiterate these points, Administrator Naval, that people will have to trick-or-treat based on their comfort level. And if they're not comfortable with allowing trick-or-treaters, have your lights off, porch lights off. If you want trick-or-treaters, keep them on, and follow all the safety precautions in terms of if you're handing out candy, use plastic gloves, and of course, people will be in costumes and masks, which is a, a good safety.
I want to add one thing to that, too. I ask that you please be respectful of other trick-or-treaters that are out there as well. So if, if there's a group that might be at a door, maybe wait on the sidewalk, or, you know, just be respectful of their social distancing, rather than have large groups kind of congregated at single places.
Residents have probably put up the six-foot tape barriers.
Yeah.
On their, on their sidewalks, for social distancing. Just, just a thought. All right, item number 11, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thanks for coming, everyone, tonight. Thanks for the comments, suggestions, and everybody drive safely, go, as you go home, and continue to be safe as we continue to fight for this pandemic. Oh, and before we do that, clerk, the motion to adjourn, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. I was on the roll. Thank you for getting the call.
She's ready to go. Yes. Yes, she can read everyone's vote. I am, I'm reading them.